Oh, okay. Where'd you go, in the ladies room?
Maybe, maybe.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, could you remain quiet, please?
We're gonna start the video. This is all being recorded, and that's why we are asking you to be at the monitor. There are cameras located, and you are actually being videotaped, and it's gonna be on TV, so.
Okay, madam.
I have a question.
Yes.
I had a store in town, I went to put a sign up, I had to get a permit, blah, blah, blah. I have a question. All the signs, since I came here in January, these businesses, like was mentioned earlier, they were hiding. Now they all have signs up. Pioneer has put up cement pillars with a nice sign, and, you know, they put landscaping in. Can I ask, did they get permits for those signs?
Again, it's an enforcement issue. If you call code enforcement, or you call their public safety and file a complaint with any of those people, you'll get a response to that. Now whether it's a legal sign or not, it's not there until we see the sign and see if there was a permit for it, somebody has to research it. And the only people that can do it is either traffic safety or one of those people, okay? So that, if you have a question like that, call public safety and they'll direct you to where to go with a complaint, okay?
Okay, sir. Well, I've called public safety a number of times, I really haven't gotten anywhere, but...
If you go right down into the desk.
I've been down to the desk.
It's 65 Maple Avenue.
I just would like to also comment on the complaints to the DEC. Myself, I've probably made over a hundred complaints to the DEC myself. It was stated earlier by Toby Carlson that there were, you know, maybe seven complaints, which is totally untrue.
Who is this, the DEC?
Yes.
We don't have anything to do with DEC. That is a state agency. They have, if they haven't responded, it's not their fault, or it's not their Mr. Derubis' fault, it's somebody hasn't responded in an agency that you've made a complaint to.
Okay, so then what exactly can you do for me? What exactly can you do for me?
This is a planning board.
I understand that.
If you wanna go to the town board...
I've been to the town board, sir.
Well, and that's what you should do there, go there again.
I've been to the town board, I've been to the public safety, I've been to DEC, I've been all over the place. So, you know, every day I get, you know, this weekend was Memorial Day weekend, couldn't even have a barbecue in your backyard. I've tried to appeal to all you boards, nobody has done anything. What are we gonna do here?
Listen, I told you there, what you have to do as a citizen, you have to do...
But I've done all that, sir, so what do you suggest I do now?
Listen, I'm not, I'm not a public agency. I'm not a person that goes out and gives a summons, or if you have, you see public safety here in the back, maybe one of those people that can go ahead there and follow up on a complaint of yours, but I can't do it for you.
Okay, sir. Well, I'm asking you to not pass any of this because it's unhealthy, we're being poisoned, and in the same token, they're not generating any tax revenue for our town.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else, please? Give your name and address, okay?
Hi, how you doing? My name is Sean Lehman, I'm at 27 Columbine Lane in Kings Park. I'm also president of the Kings Park Civic Association. Just wanna make a statement that the Kings Park Civic Association is against the proliferation of heavy industrial uses in the Kings, excuse me, in the Kings Park industrial area. Therefore, we oppose these petitions. However, I think the real reason why we're here tonight is because the town fails to properly address the area. They continue to do this. So we agree with some of the other civic associations here who have asked for a postponement. We think the town should recommend that the civics, the property owners in the industrial area, and town board members get together and discuss the issue. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Martin Malarky. I live at 18 Del Marlene in Comac. And when you were talking about residences in the area, you may have forgotten that on the other side of, the candy section in Comac is down there, and Fort Solanga is on the other side of the railroad tracks. We're impacted by all of this stuff. I came out here in 1966, and I've been living here ever since. It was fields there. What's been allowed is criminal. And what you're getting here is criminals, and they're standing here, and they don't seem to be embarrassed. They break, they violate the law, they hire some lawyer, come in here, he gets his fees, and they get away with it, over and over and over again, and everybody knows about it. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Excuse me, will you please address us, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
I will tell you one thing. That is a disgrace, to stand in front of public people who live in the area and say, "Yeah, we've been violating laws, and now guess what, we want you to legalize it." Are you kidding? Are you kidding? Are you serious? Well, I'm here to represent the Malarky Civic Association, that means my family, my wife, my four children, and my five grandchildren. We live here in Long Island, we have a stake in the area. I did not see those signs. If I saw, if I saw any, I saw maybe one. I'm not blaming you. I'm not blaming you. I'm just telling you a fact. And I do drive down that way because I volunteer in Kings Park quite often, so that's a shortcut, and I go down to the bank there, and I, you don't care about that stuff. What I'm telling you is, I didn't see the signs, I'm backing up what other people have told you. And the real, I prefer an adjournment, I do think, first of all, just on the statement that was read earlier, this is a slam dunk. You should just turn the thing down and go home, tell everybody. I mean, this is the most silly thing I ever heard. Okay? Thank you. Again, appreciate your time.
And just for your information, sir, I have been here since 1948, that's 64 years. When I came here, there was not one house hardly going all the way into Comac. So that, I appreciate everything that everybody is saying here tonight. The thing is, that the town board is the one that makes zoning, that accepts, to a change of zone, the town board is the only one that can do that. All we can do here is voice everybody's opinion, get it on the record, then if we make a recommendation to the town board, they have got everybody's comments, positive and negative, to evaluate if they do make a decision, okay? That's the way it operates. Okay?
Hi, my name is Nancy Loebz. I live at 25 Cornflower Lane, East Northport, and I'm up here to speak to you for two reasons. First, I want to let it be known to the board here that there are representatives from the town of Huntington. I am one of them, and there are many more of us back there. So, we did not get notification, but yes, the town of Huntington is also objecting to this zoning. Number two, I'd like to draw attention to, although Toby Carlson did speak eloquently about wanting to, wanting to change the zoning laws so that he could continue his family business, which has been longstanding, and he would like to do it legally while conforming to the new laws. The truth be told, in the words of his lawyer, who stated that they are actually requesting the zoning change not for the present businesses that are non-conforming, for example, rock crushing, but because they would like finality for when these current businesses would like to sell their properties, they would like to know what type of businesses can come in there in the future. So this zoning law change is not necessarily for the existing businesses, but rather for what detrimental businesses might be coming in the future. And that's it. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Yes, sir?
Paul Graff, 48 Orchard Drive, Smithtown, Northport, New York, actually, but I live on the Smithtown side. I'm representing the Fort Solanga Association tonight. We'd like to thank our friends to the south from the Town Line Association for the things they've had to say, and our friends from Comac for their words as well, as well as Kings Park. So yes, we 100% support the initiation of an environmental impact statement and study in that area. We think we need to know what's going on and what the impact has been. Secondly, we are wary of the current land use in the industrial area. We are heartened by some of the positive work that some of the businesses have done to clean up their roadside appearance, that's all good news, and at the same time, very concerned about the abject disregard by other businesses, such as the Kings Park Associates at the intersection of Pulaski Road and Town Line Road, who have ignored almost every action that was taken by this board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Going forward, well, I should say going back, in 2010-11, we had numerous complaints and concerns submitted to the DEC regarding the odors in the area. My heart goes out to the lady who's experiencing it right now, and the folks experiencing it right now, 'cause although things moved away from us, they went someplace else, and we just moved the problem. And I think we're also concerned about the problem being moved in terms of this community kicking the can down the road, has been used several times tonight. I wanna say that I believe there is no room for heavy industry in this area, based upon the cumulative effect from the mass burn incinerator that exists right across the street on Town Line Road, and our concerns about how heavy industry could impact our community and surrounding communities in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes.
Thank you, members of the board, for taking the time this evening to listen, to not only be applicants...
Name and address, please.
My name is Debbie Danley. I live at 76 Old Comac Road in Kings Park. D-A-N-L-E-Y. And while I'm not well-versed on town code and law and things like that, what I am well-versed on is being a mom. And what I would like is to let my children play outside without it stinking. And right now, we have a problem where I live. On Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, the smell was toxic. It was horrible. My children could not play outside. And I ask you to keep that in mind when making your recommendation to the town board, because right now, what's going on is not okay for the residents. And to allow it to continue and not look for a solution that would not only benefit the residents, but perhaps we can come to some kind of compromise with the business owners. I'm not looking to put anyone out of business. I would love nothing more than to come to a solution, a compromise, where their land is not only valuable, but they can employ some of our local residents, they can bring in a tax revenue. Right now, the tax revenue's not there, the odors are there, and the residents' concerns are just compounding. And we ask you, when you make your decision, think of my children, please, I beg of you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joy Esser, that's E-S-S-E-R. I live at 7 Inglorore Court, I-N-G-E-L-O-R-E Court in Smithtown, New York. I have several thoughts after coming and listening to everybody this evening. I believe that everybody has legitimate concerns, which I'm sure you, as the board and as the planning board, have seen. Some things I would like to remind you and the audience of, and that is the history, not only of the Carlson properties, but of the surrounding area. I am, you wouldn't know from my last name, but I am a Carlson, I grew up as a Carlson. I also grew up a mile down the road from the Northport Power Plant. So I know how these things can impact your life. For the most part, they've had a positive impact on me. Now, there have been times, growing up in Northport, when they purged the lines, that the smell is unbearable. And I am sure, down in that area, by the Huntington dump and the Smithtown dump, that is true. I've heard stories, growing up, how it used to be an open field where the municipal waste was burned, and there was black smoke, which I'm sure was toxic, that just rolled for miles. And that was improved upon. We got a dump, it wasn't burned anymore, you didn't have that toxic, but you had the smells. And I remember being down there as a child with the smells, and it was horrible. Then Huntington decided to build an incinerator, greatly reducing the smells, that's wonderful. However, they played with the rules. The rule says your tower has, your smokestack has to be so high, so what do they do? They dig a hole and set it in the bottom of the hole, so their smokestack is not really high enough. Hence, we have the problems of the toxic metals. Those are not necessarily things that come from the businesses, they come from our homes and our waste. This is something that Smithtown and Huntington together need to plan and address. I know the roads when I was a kid. Town Line Road was never paved, or if it was, it was paved up to the yellow line, 'cause Smithtown only wanted to pave their half, and Huntington only wanted to pave their half. It was a mess. You guys have gotten better. And I don't know that it's your, the planning board, but the towns have gotten better at working together, of paving the whole road. Probably needs to be improved more. Now, I don't know what to do with the truck traffic, because if you have a business, any business, whether it's your grocery store, your mom and pop, pop dry cleaner, you're gonna have trucks. Your pizza place has got delivery trucks. Gotta do something about the roads. I don't know what the solution is, because nobody wants to have the trucks in their backyard. I know the trucks are there, they're not pleasant, but we need them. If we didn't have trucks, we wouldn't have groceries. If we didn't have trucks, we wouldn't have our lawn care. We didn't have trucks, we wouldn't have our building materials. I would like to suggest to the planning board that you take a lesson from boxing. They have lightweights, heavyweights, and middleweights. Somewhere in between, heavy industrial where anything goes, and I understand residents' concerns, that they don't want companies coming in that are going to have all sorts of extra, more heavy metals that would be dangerous, that are not there now. I also understand the Carlson and Matus and Clary and other businesses that are in the area, that they have a problem, they have a job to do, they have employees to employ, but they're having trouble doing it because the code doesn't let them do what they're doing legally, what they need to do for their businesses. So my suggestion, sir, is... My suggestion, sir, is that you figure out a way to make a medium industrial zone. The specifics, obviously the devil's in the details. But I understand residents' concerns that there not be thrown open a blanket. People don't want more of what they don't like. I understand, business, they have to be able to operate, and they need to be able to do it in such a way that they're not always worried about what fine somebody's gonna decide to put in, or what rule is gonna change that's gonna make what they're doing now not doable anymore. So I implore you, figure out how to do a medium industrial zone. Something in between now, which isn't working, and heavy, which would be open, open season, maybe. I don't know. I don't know that it would be, but that is people's fears. So please, figure out a way to do it in between. I know everything that goes on may not be pleasant to everybody, but from my childhood to now, things have been cleaned up tremendously. I think the businesses would like to continue to do that if they can do it in a way that makes business sense. More and more ways to be business savvy and green are coming about if you give them the opportunity and the help in the form of a middle zoning. That's my thought. That's not something I've discussed with people in my family, business people I know, but that is what I have observed in growing up, in a business house, and also a house where I've been there, I've smelled the smells, I know how bad they can be, but I also know how much better it is now, on a daily basis, than what it was. And the amount of dust that's there is a lot less than it was when I was a child. Thank you for hearing me. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Stagg, 7 Quanta Court, Comac. Stagg, S-T-A-G-G. 7 Quanta Court, Comac. I don't wanna be redundant, and I know the issue at hand here is the actual, the variance that is being seeked out by Mr. Carlson. My question is, I need to know if my children and our residents are gonna have power plants in our backyards. And on June 1st, Mr. Carlson and Mr. Derubis, excuse me, participated in a, an article written by Rachel Shapiro from the Beacon Record, and both parties, yourself and Mr. Carlson, indicated that there were gonna be no power plants, or there was no such plan for a power plant. However, earlier this evening, it was discussed that Competitive Power Ventures had submitted to the town of Smithtown six months ago. You didn't acknowledge that in the, in the article with the Beacon. So I wanna know if that is on the table, or is it not on the table?
What I said was, there's no application pending before the town. That's what I, there's nothing in the town. We have always acknowledged, we have always acknowledged that we met with representatives for, who have, for proposals for power plants. We've never hidden that. We've told everybody about that. But there are no applications that have been submitted, and what is currently before LIPA are concepts or proposals that they will select for us to evaluate if and when they become an application. There's nothing pending in the town.
And part of this proposal, there's a section here that says, "Smithtown Energy Center Community Acceptance," as if that's something us, as a community in the panel here, is representative of. I don't see any notification of this anywhere, nor any correction in the article.
Once the applicant, is, this is my understanding of how this process will work, once LIPA determines what are the most viable applications, those applicants are required to reach out to the communities to seek their particular input. That process has not yet begun. So they're required to do that. We have acknowledged that there are proposals for power plants, where if and when LIPA selects whatever one that they want, then that firm will then seek, before we go any further, to an outreach to the local agencies and the local civics.
Isn't it correct, though, Competitive Power Ventures, that site proposed originally was on Mr. Carlson's property?
We have in that area, if you're going to cross-examine about what proposals we have, I have three.
No, I'm just saying, 'cause Mr. Carlson indicated he'd wanna sell any property.
I have three proposals, I have, I'm answering your question. I have three proposals for power plants that people have come in to see me in that area. One on Carlson's property, and two on the adjacent properties. So if you were to ask me today, you know, which proposal is being considered, I believe two of those have been rejected by LIPA. I believe Carlson's is still viable.
So at least we've acknowledged Mr. Carlson's credibility about his intentions of selling the property is inaccurate, potentially.
I, that, I don't know what arrangements he put legally with the power plant, whether it is for sale or whether he's leasing.
Okay. I think we all figured that out. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anne Chaison, C-H...
Yes, excuse me. There's a lady in behind you that hasn't spoken yet. You've already spoken once?
Not about this.
You haven't spoken about this?
No.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
All right. My name is Anne Chaison, C-H-A-I-S-S-O-N. I live at 575 Pulaski Road, Kings Park, New York. This has to do with the previous person's topic that was up here speaking. I've been, it's been mentioned to me that there is a power plant that already exists at the Kings Park Psychiatric Center area, on the grounds of the Kings Park Psychiatric Center. And it was also mentioned that this power plant could, without too much cost, be converted into a suitable power plant for the area. So I'd like some comments on that, please.
Well, this is not, this is not an application here for a power plant. We have an application for heavy industry, and that's what we're addressing. We're not addressing power plants. It's not our jurisdiction, okay? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Adele Dager. I reside at 7 Cameron Court, Comac, New York. Ironically, I moved from the city to Long Island for a better quality of life. I moved in in 1996, I have three children who grew up here. I can tell you it was 16 years of living hell. I am neighbors with Mr. Carlson's property, okay, and they're not good neighbors, nor are any of the other properties on Old Northport Road. My backyard abuts Old Northport Road. Let me go into detail about what I had to suffer through for 16 years. On weekends, and I'm pretty sure businesses are not supposed to start between, before 6:30 a.m., I am awakened from a deep sleep with the roar of engines, truck, the backs of trucks flapping and slamming. I smell diesel fuel. I also can't sit and enjoy my backyard because I have dust from the asphalt companies, okay? I made several phone calls to the town, I'm sure you have it all documented, I'm the crazy lady from Cameron Court who calls up the DEC and the town board members, all for naught. I have made several complaints everywhere, and I don't feel like I'm getting satisfaction, I feel like I'm being mocked. Some of the other things that I had to endure were the illegal dirt bike in back of my property, which also spews and kicks up dirt. Your town municipality is the biggest culprit, okay? It's unsightly, the roads are filled with muck and garbage, they park illegally on my abutment, okay? Put shrubbery up, like some of the other businesses. Ironically, the two businesses that you talked about that really shouldn't be there was the nursery, okay, and the golf driving range, they're the only good neighbors in that area. They maintain their property, there's no smell coming from them, they have my vote to stay. Now, Mr. Derubis, you admitted that there is legal activity going on back there. Please, I implore you, point me in the right direction so I know who to contact, I know who to hound. I'm very persistent. I have, I'm a mother, I have children, I know how to nag.
Miss, miss, listen, we are not, Mr. Derubis is in the enforcement, we're not in enforcement.
But I'm asking you to please tell me.
You go to the town board, and you go, you get somebody at the town board, and you get a registered complaint with the town board, and somebody will respond, or else that's the person that's supposed to do it.
Okay. Every year, okay, I've come to these meetings, I voiced my concern, and I wrote, I have written documentation to Mr. Vecchio, okay? Where do they go? Where, where is all of these documentations that I sent and I submitted? Where, where is all of these documentations that I sent and I submitted?
I have no idea, and we don't have any control over it.
Well, I oppose, I, I don't want to change the light industry, because anything is going on right now.
Okay. That's, that's what we can deal with. We can deal with your comments that you don't want any changes on, okay?
Right, but I want you to tell me, you're the town board, you're supposed to have my back.
No, no, we're not the town board.
We're the planning board.
We're a planning board.
Okay. So you listen to what I want and my neighbors want in their backyards. We're taxpayers, are we not?
That's what, that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
Okay?
I thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Dan Fusco. I live at 222 Cedrus Avenue, East Northport. I just wanted to say that, there's an old saying that says it's easier to ask for, say it again? There you go. It's easier to ask for forgiveness than for permission, and the pattern has been set with violations of the, of the, of what's already been set. So I don't think that granting a new, a new, I'm getting flustered, but, but giving that, we don't want it, that's basically it. We don't think that if you grant them a different variance or whatever, that they're not going to live within the means of what you grant them. So I think it's more of a permitting issue through possibly the building department or whatever, but I don't think changing it to heavy industrial is the way to go. They have a proven track record of not, not living up to the zoning that they're in right now, so I don't see how changing it, I mean, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Paula Montaldo, M-O-N-T-A-L-D-O. I reside at 3 Farmstead Road, Comac, New York. I'm a mother of three children, and my children attend Northridge Primary School, right on Townline Road. And all I have to say is that I moved to this area because it was a community and had great schools. And to think that my children will be endangered going to those schools is making us very upset in this community. And I believe that as the board, and all of you, I believe, here are probably parents, some of you even grandparents, that you too would be concerned if you had children in the area. And as Toby sits here and talks about his new baby girl, well, I have three beautiful baby boys, and I don't want them to be affected either. So if he doesn't want his daughter to be affected and have a nice life, so do we and every other person in this room that has children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and so on and so forth. So please, we ask you to consider the children of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nina Mirando, M-I-R-A-N-D-O, and I live at 26 Glen Lane in Kings Park. And I'm also speaking for three or four other neighbors that live on Glen Lane. There is already a very strong mulching smell that comes from back there, which is disgusting when you sit in your backyard. And the dust is constant. There's constant dust on all the furniture in the backyard. I think it's a simple thing of, how can you, why don't they just do something that fits the zoning that they're zoned for? Why does the zoning have to be changed? I don't think that they are to be trusted at all, because they already don't comply with the zoning that they have. And I think it would be very unfair to people that live in the surrounding neighborhood to change it to heavy industry. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Cheryl Michaels, M-I-C-H-A-E-L, and I live at 37 Spring Meadow Drive in Kings Park. I'm about a block or so away from where all the action is tonight, and I wasn't planning on saying much, but being that I'm very close to the area, I am burdened with the odor and the stench that comes out. I brought my parents to live with me several years ago, and I have a beautiful community in a two-family environment. Subsequent to moving here, we were all a perfect family. We were fine, and we have been burdened with sicknesses and illnesses. I have two beautiful children, one who has significant ADHD, and he suffers from that, and I have a husband who is burdened with cancer. And the first thing the doctor said was, "You exposed to any toxins in the neighborhood," because he was a young, young husband, and we were beginning our lives with our children who were nine and five. They were younger at the time. My mother is burdened with asthma and breathing problems, and my father's also had several types of cancer. I'm under a doctor's care for migraines, and I take medication. I worked my whole life until I had a home office here in Kings Park, which, at which time I subsequently got migraines. My brother decided to move into the area, because we are a close family, and he has three beautiful boys, and he lives a block away, and two of his children are also burdened with asthma and breathing issues. You can call it a coincidence, and maybe, but I don't think so. And I called the DEC, and I know we're not here to dispute that, and you're not the DEC, but I myself called maybe 30 times. I've had them sitting in front of my house, waiting for smells, and I said to the gentleman, "The smells just don't happen. Sometimes it could happen in the middle of the night." And he said, "But we're not paid to come out here. We can only come here during the day, during business hours." So you need to understand as well, I have a family, and I want to see them live and not die. And I hope you take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
Hi, Linda Henninger, 1 Meadowwood Lane, Fortsalonga, New York, H-E-N-N-I-N-G-E-R. And I am the proud president of the newly revised Kings Park Neighbors Association. We're back. I'd just like to say that I've come here tonight, after speaking with the board, to state that we adamantly oppose any zone change to heavy in this area. The present non-conforming uses have proven disastrous to the people that live in that area. Allowing this change would continue to hurt the residents, and we're opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Wazato, 12 Country Oaks Drive, Kings Park. As a member of the Kings Park Civic Association, for years, we've tried to address this issue. We've come before, we've come in front of this board, we've come in front of the town board, we've spoken to Frank numerous times, and we've spoken to the landowners. All the issues that the people have discussed tonight do exist. They're there. And that's why, for the last five, six, seven years since Shaun and I became leaders of the Kings Park Civic Association, and during Greg Zernicky's tenure, we've tried to address this issue, and it just goes on and on and on. And, you know, I don't, I don't know what this meeting is going to accomplish in the end, but I hope it accomplishes something, because we've asked Frank, and Shaun spoke to Frank, and I know the town board members spoke to Frank, and I know other civic associations spoke to Frank, and we asked him to adjourn this meeting, and he didn't adjourn it. We wanted to speak with the landowners, with the civic associations, and come up with a solution to this problem, because it can't persist any longer. The people in this community don't deserve it, the businesses in the area don't deserve it, and we need to come up with a solution. So until you, your board, until the town board, until Frank gets serious about addressing this issue, it's going to persist. Now, we have jobs to make, we have revenue to generate, we have an area to clean up, and if you guys don't get to work and do this, then something is going to happen. And either it's going to come from the community, it's going to come from the lawsuit, or it's going to come from somewhere else, but it has to get addressed. We're running out of patience. I'm running out of patience. I've been doing this for a long time, and I'm out of patience. I've written numerous letters, and it doesn't get addressed. And there have been a lot of misstatements here tonight, half-truths, and there are a lot of people who are passionate and feel very strongly about what's going on there, but it's got to get resolved, and the only way it's going to get resolved is by people sitting down at a table and figuring out what the best path is to find a solution that's going to work. And you have to do that. It's none of this, this board and this back and forth, and no more spinning, Frank. The solutions have to be made. We know what the solutions are. We've spoken about it repeatedly, Frank. You know what they are. You came up with a zoning ordinance that didn't make any sense. You included heavy industrial uses that don't currently exist. And then you come out tonight, and you say that you came up with a solution that, that just includes light industry, when you know that's not true. That's not what you proposed, and we were against it. Come up with a zoning amendment that makes sense. We want light. We know that there's a need for special exceptions for current uses for outdoor storage, because that's what they're doing. A lot of the landowners don't even want heavy industry.
Excuse me, just talk to the board, please.
They just want to come into compliance.
That's what we want.
And we have to figure out how to get there.
That's exactly what we want.
But you say that, but this has been going on for decades.
Listen, I, I tell you, I've lived here since 1948. This is not, this is something new to me.
We know that.
Okay, so the only, but we can't settle it. The town board are the only people.
So make the recommendation that they need to move forward. You can do that.
That's what, that's what we're trying to do here tonight.
Okay. We hope you do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 2 Barley Place in Comac. We've heard a lot of stories today about air quality and health issues, and I would like to ask the board, as well as the civic groups, if I'm allowed to ask that, if there has been any benchmarking of air quality, test wells for water quality, or any sort of baselining of environmental systems and environmental qualities, so that an informed decision can be made on those topics.
Well, it's got to be a CEQA review of this application. That's the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and it has to comply in that application to the requirements there of the CEQA, so that it's not going to be something that is going to be passed over. It's going to have to have a CEQA review there in order for anything there to be done on any of these parcels, any of them.
I understand that that will happen in the future. I'm asking if anything has happened to date.
Well, that's what the whole.
And I would, I would offer that, probably many people in this room would think that that's a worthwhile expenditure, worthwhile expenditure of our tax dollars, okay? And to hire a consultant to review that CEQA report is crucial, one that's on our dollar.
I know that, but we don't do it here personally. We have people there that are required to do that, and it's done under the CEQA requirements there, that it go for review for any application.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying that the board has the right to make a recommendation that we hire our own consultant to review that, and it has been discussed a few times tonight, right? But having somebody review that from our side with our own baselining is an important piece of the puzzle that shouldn't be overlooked.
That would be a consideration for the town board, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm just asking this board to make that recommendation. Thank you.
You can take that mic out if you want.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I don't even need it. I'm very loud. Marie Elena Gandini, G-A-N-D-I-N-I, 50, Wintercrest Lane, East Northport. I want a decision. Are we keeping the meeting open, or what are we doing here?
Well, we wait for everybody to finish, and then we'll make a decision.
Well, I think that it's going to start to become repetitive now.
Well, you can hear our decision if you want to stay.
Okay, so.
Well, we have to wait till we finish, we have to wait till we finish the hearing before we can make a recommendation, okay?
Okay, well, I think, I think we're pretty much going to be repeating ourselves and repeating ourselves and repeating ourselves.
Yes.
So I think, any last calls?
Right this call.
Okay, fantastic. I would like a decision. I have my dad at my house with my children. I need to get home. What is the decision? Is Huntington going to be able to weigh in?
Is everybody finished?
They said they were. Nobody spoke up.
Is everybody finished talking?
Let's move along.
No more comments? Everybody else, everybody's done? Okay. Members of the board, comment? Well, we've had, I think, at least three that I could think of groups that have indicated that, through their representatives, that they haven't had enough time to prepare their comments and would want the hearing adjourned. So with that in mind, I would move that we adjourn the hearing to allow those people who feel they haven't had enough time to comment, to comment. Any other comments by the board?
It's unanimous, I think the applicants want it adjourned, the community wants it adjourned, and.
We adjourn this, we're going to adjourn. Can we pick a date certain, though? We're going to adjourn there, the, the motion then, for the recommendation there by the planning director.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Normally, we do not hear these matters in July and August because of, they're the vacation times. So either we adjourn it to the next meeting, or it's got to be, we should do it to September, because it's been past practice from this board that people are on vacation during those months, and it would be difficult to render a decision.
Well, we should be getting a decision there from the town of Huntington, that's for sure.
Well, we'll get a decision from the town of Huntington, but either we make it for the next meeting, or we have to make it.
I just think it makes sense to pick a date now, because people are here, they may want to come back, other people may have left already, so that way, everybody knows when the date is.
Okay. I was just informed by Blaze that 45 days is July 5th, if we want to wait, give Huntington the full.
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days. However, legally, I don't think we have to. I think, but all I'm looking for is a practical decision on the board. Either we do it at the second meeting in June, or we have to do it in September.
The second meeting in June is only going to be a couple of weeks. We may have the same requests then, they still didn't have enough time. So I think it would make sense to adjourn it to the first meeting in September.
Okay.
That way, everybody knows when it is.
Everybody knows when it is. They can come back. The people, some, some of the groups I see that were here, they left. They can now find out between now and then that it's on for the first meeting in September. They'll have an opportunity to prepare their comments, and they can bring them in. Okay?
And that should.
Motion?
No, beforehand. We also have, we never got to F4B, which is the second zone change in the, in the area. I think they should be postponed as well. Mr. Tramark?
We all agree.
We haven't got to that one yet.
We're not up to that yet.
No, that's fine, Frank.
We're not up to that yet. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's get rid of one thing. Let's do this one first.
Okay.
This is going to be adjourned until the September, the first meeting in September.
Which, we got a.
And everybody that was here, you can let them know. September the 5th. They can come back. September the 5th?
First Wednesday in September, which is September 5th.
Okay? First Wednesday in September, September 5th. Yes.
The second meeting in September.
No, that's, that's it, it's the first meeting in September, right? Yes. First, the first meeting in September, the first Wednesday. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So are they. Now, now, right now, do you have the application for, do you want to go ahead with that application, Mr. Tramarko?
Now Frank is saying we should adjourn it.
Well, it's the same issues in the same location. I mean, why goes.
The only thing that, that, that concerns me, and I don't have an objection to adjourning it, but I kind of think that, you know, we got a little mixed up tonight between some of the folks talking about Carlson, other folks talking about basically Farino 4B, and I don't know how we can correct that at the next, at the next hearing, so we, we don't have that confusion.
Well, I think what we could do is, we'll notify, we'll put on notice, and this time we'll put on the web. I'll, I'll see if I could get, that we, with maps and illustrations, so that they know which is which. And then we'll hold both hearings simultaneously, and they get to address either ones, because I do agree that there was some overlap between the two, but the issue.
There's going to be overlap. Some of the people who are going to speak on one are going to speak on the other.
Right, so we might as well distinguish between the two, but we'll do that the next meeting, I think. But I think they've already, were testifying about your other application, F4B.
That's correct, right. Okay, so if we. Okay, so if we have a set of maps, and the people can look at it, and everybody else, I think that would make.
And for the public's benefit, by the way, the documents that are presented here at the meeting, including these files, they're public records. You do not need a Freedom of Information request, you may come to the office at any time during business hours and request to see the files.
Maybe what we could do is he could make his presentation on the other one, and then we can have whoever's here, they can come up one at a time and comment on either one or both, rather than taking all the comments on one, taking all the comments on the other.
Okay.
Might be better to do it that way.
Do simultaneous, okay, make both applications.
They can just come up and just tell us they want to speak about one, or the other, or both.
Okay.
Why can't the file be posted on the web with the PDF file?
We could try to do that. We don't have, I have to figure out how to, how to get our data processed. No, no, we have a town website, and there are, like any other organization, we have rules to do it. If we, I could see if we could put the documents into a PDF and PDF them out to anybody who requests them. But to put them on the website is a big to-do in the town. I have to see if we could, what we can do, but we'll try to see if we get that information. The real problem that you have on the town website is it's, people have been complaining that they can't find things on our site, even though we have a lot of information up there. And that's my concern would be on this one, that you won't be able to find it. Let me see what I could do, and then we'll put a PDF out to somebody.
You can Google search the file.
Well, not on our website.
Is there a timeline on that PDF file, so we can all, so we go for it?
Well, this is, we just discussed this, I mean, the last 30 seconds, I got to.
No, I mean, I'm not interested in that, but maybe by.
Well, what I'll do is, I have to go with staff, we have the facilities to get all the, what's the hard part is all the illustrations that are oversized in the report, I have to send those out. I will have the file done by Friday on the eight and a half by 11:00, and if somebody wants to see any of the paperwork, we'll have that done, everything that's in the file. It's the maps that are oversized that I have to send them out to be scanned and then reduced, but I will have those all done within a week and a half.
Would it also, when you have the next meeting, to have a projector to show the map on the walls?
We could do that.
Any chance of getting some additional seating?
We're going to need it.
Oh, yeah.
I have a morning.
How about a little door? Can I get you to get a bigger place next time?
Well, I guess we could get more chairs in here, but.
This is where the meetings are held.
These are where the meetings are held. There's not a bigger place that I could think of to go to.
We go, there's no fire codes there.
This is where the town board usually meets there, and.
I was just concerned, because it says the maximum capacity of 225, so will residents not be permitted in that wanted to be heard, or could a bigger venue be found? Because there's a sign back there with a capacity.
Well, the reason that there's a capacity is the fire marshal, okay?
You don't, you don't take care of that.
You know, we know we don't take care of that. The fire marshal, yeah, lays down the law, you know, there's no argument with him.
No, we agree, we agree, that's why we're thinking maybe a bigger venue.
Well, I don't know where you can get one.
Is there a school auditorium? School auditorium or?
Not in the middle?
Well, we'll have Frank there looking at it.
Mr. Chairman, what I'll do is, I'll, there's a number of issues, but I'll see what I could do with the town board and the town attorney about, we have had meetings at the schools before in the past, so if they're, but the problem as I see it is usually September is when they just begin their school year, and they're very reluctant to give up.
No, they don't like to have you interrupt their school.
Okay, but I'll see what I can do about that. The best, our best option is probably going to be New York Avenue.
Either that, or else you could probably move, if we got up onto the, if we got up onto the stage, you could probably put another 50 chairs in here, at least.
I don't think they have 50 chairs more in this building.
They don't have the chairs, okay.
Okay, I mean.
What about, what about mediums? How do they, how are they able to record it if they want to.
Well, that would be another issue.
We don't have cameras.
That'll be another issue that we have to resolve as well. I do know in some of the schools, they have them, but I don't, again, we, this is all, we're talking about this, we'll have to discuss this at the next meeting, because we'll have to explore it. I'll come up with some options for the board, and we'll discuss it.
We still have to adjourn the other one, right? Hold on, we got to, you want to, you want to adjourn?
I have one quick question. What are we going to do to get the word out that there's.
Will you, will you come up to the mic and give your name, please? And your address, because that's the way we keep track of everything.
Absolutely. Gilda Axelrod, 23 Coconut Drive, Comac. I'm just wondering what we're going to do to get the word out for this meeting, so that everyone who needs to be here can be here, so we don't have to adjourn again.
Okay, let me just say, the first thing is, is we're trying to work practically on how to handle all of this. So I will probably report to the board at the next meeting what our options are. I don't want to give off-the-cuff response.
There's a lot of, a lot of considerations have to be made as far as arrangements, if we were going to move.
Absolutely.
It's a sudden, we just can't say, oh, we're going to move over here, and let's go.
Right.
Okay, so I will have an answer by the next meeting, which is two weeks from today. You may then call the office, our phone number is on the bottom of that, it's Planning Department, And the staff, I will inform the staff, so everybody will be able to answer your question as to when the meeting will be, and if we could put something up on the town's website, we'll see what we could do in that particular regard, it will be noticed. So there will be a long enough lead time for handling this. We could have at least two months' notice for the preparation of this particular meeting. And I was, by the way, the other thing, I was just talking to my staff, we could have the PDFs about a week from now. So call my office, and we'll have the PDFs available, and we'll either email them to you, or you may pick the copy up on a CD, no charge.
Okay, thank you. While I'm here, I wasn't planning on being here, but while I'm here, I just want to make the point that our area is a non-attainment area for ground-level ozone, all of Suffolk County is, and our area in particular. And when it's humid out and it's hot out, we sit basically in a stew of particulate matter that belches out of the Northport Power Plant, the Huntington Incinerator, and all of the asphalt and mining operations, and our car fumes, and the truck fumes, and on and on. Unfortunately, my family, we have respiratory illness in our family. I have a son who goes for allergy shots every week, I have a husband that has bronchitis every year, twice. I just got over bronchitis myself. None of this happened until we moved to Comac. When we lived in Franklin Square, we were very healthy. We moved to Comac, and we started getting respiratory issues. And unfortunately, I love my neighborhood, I love my house, I love my neighbors, but the air quality stinks. And you would think that Suffolk County should be better than Nassau, but it's not. And I grew up in New York City, and my air in Forest Hills was better than the air out here. To allow businesses to proliferate in this area and create industry that's only going to further pollute is a problem, and it shouldn't be allowed. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
See you in September.
Frank, is that definite, that meeting September 5th now, is that, is that definite or to be?
It's adjourned to September 5th.
Yes.
That's, that's the date, unless, that's our date today. Two weeks from now, I may have a different arrangement, I mean, let's say I find the school that they'll be available the second meeting in September.
A little bit further back.
Yeah, it will not be near, it won't be sooner, it might be later, depending upon the practical arrangements that we would have to do. So we will try to see what we, we'll contact Public Safety, we'll see about expanding the seating in here, and what we could do to maximize the seating. We'll take a look and see what other sites may be available, understanding that we have to record those.
Right.
And there.
I understand there's a lot of arrangements that have to be made.
Right.
Pick a spot to say.
And we'll, we'll give the, a menu to the board at the next meeting, is what's practical, and after then, we will be able to definitively say what the meeting will be. Tentatively, right now, we're talking, we're targeting September 5th.
Okay. Agreeable, Mr. Tramarko?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else there with the board there? We have to, we have to adjourn the other hearing, or we're going to do it to the same date?
Yes.
All right, so then, I want to make a motion. Make a motion. In a matter of FB4 Realty LLC, number 2009-05, I move that we adjourn that matter to the September 5th, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night. Now, what do we have, adoption of the minutes? We have adoption of minutes?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman, adoption of minutes for the May 2nd, 2012 Planning Board Meeting.
Motion to adopt the minutes of. I move that we adopt the minute of the May 2nd, 2012 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. That's it? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.